I'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pleasure, please. Good evening, everyone. Going to set some ground rules and we're going to jump right to some visitors. As I've told you in the past, I go home and critique our meetings and one of the things we need to do better on is raise your hand and be recognized because we're stepping on one another and it doesn't have time to switch the mic to your location and we're not hearing everything that the people that are watching the big screen, eight DVDs and all that other stuff, so. And also, please don't click your pen, okay? Just testing. And, oh, oh, cell phones, too. Yeah, that was a bad one. The governor's office called me at the last meeting. Yeah, well, we're trying to, we're trying to make a, we're trying to set up a dedication for some fire trucks and hopefully Ralph will be there to share that day with us. Okay. Welcome senators and representatives. Who would like to go first? We open the floor to you. We'd like to hear from you. You know, you haven't started yet, but tell us how it's going to end. Yeah, we want good news.
Well, I'm lost here.
Thank you.
I understood you wanted to know what the big issues were this year. The first issue is going to be the budget. How are we going to, how are we going to make do with what we've got? What, what do we have to cut back on? Do we have to raise any more money? I don't think anybody's talking about that right now. So that'll be the big issue. We just cut 1.2 million dollars out of our pre-K budget this morning with prescription drugs. I think it was a pretty good deal, but those are the kinds of things you're going to be working on. It took a long time to get there also. The second big issue from my perspective, it will be Vermont Yankee. The issues are safety slash reliability, the decommissioning fund, the spinoff, which is what they're trying to reorganize into a different corporation, and the rate, what they're going to charge us. And I'm happy to go into more details on this, but those, those are the two big ones as I see it. And then trying to figure out how we can fit into a national, trying to get into a national pilot for something that'll give us healthcare. So far, that's not working.
These big issues that you feel are coming down the road.
Large big issue for, for me, which is going to be in the transportation committees. A focus for me is going to be obviously within our own backyard, it's going to be bridges. And the bridges across the state, I think, you know, what we're looking at here is an example of what can happen in just about every, any backyard and it's going to happen again here in Vermont. We're at thirty-three percent of Vermont's town and state bridges are either structurally deficient or functionally deficient and I think we need to take a really, really good look at that. Where we are, how we're going to fund them. We have the capacity to look at the bonding. Last session, we passed the language, what would be necessary to bond for up to 120 million dollars. We chose to not go that route because we have and still have some stimulus money that came into the state both last year and this year. We're going to use that up first before we, before we dip into that. But as we go forward, we're going to be looking, looking at that. Paving, of course, is, is another issue, but transportation. I did have the opportunity to visit and I'll, and I won't take up everybody's time here tonight if you know that I go on and on at times, but each one of the chairs, we had a conversation to see what the priorities were going to be in each committee. And I don't know if you want me to go into that much detail, but some of, in the healthcare committee is going to be focused, really looking on. And there've been a lot of people who have been focused all session on what's happening in DC and at every moment of the large healthcare debate. And where does Vermont fall? There are two people who've been following that whole situation in depth that give us a report. What aspects are plus for Vermont and what aspects might be a negative for Vermont? There are thirteen states in the country that have been ahead of the curve so far in healthcare. Vermont being one of them marked with our, our efforts in Catamount and Dr. Dinosaur and many other things. So one of the things that they're looking at is in particular, I think the senate bill more so than the house bill, that Vermont may lose on some of those aspects that we would not like to see those pass. So healthcare is that. We've got, of course, government offices looking at things of restructuring and some other government oversight pieces that they have going on. And without looking at my notes, I wouldn't want to go any further. I'm going to let Greg talk about education.
Am I limited to education?
No, I'm just going to put that one on my list.
Michael, thanks for the invite. Thanks to the council for inviting us here. And I was very glad that Melvin had given me a heads up even though I hadn't called it back to let him know that I was coming. So I want you all to make sure that, although I did do that, but it was, I was a little bit late. And I do want you all to know that I've worked very hard after school to get all my papers corrected so I can spend as much time up here tonight as you need me to be here. I think, Michael, there, there's. I was thinking about this long before I came here tonight, thinking that if it were me deciding on what four or five categories or issues that the state of Vermont ought to be concentrating on, here's what they would be. Number one, and you can put them in any order you want, my number one happens to be education, because I think that's very important, not only for the future of Vermont, but for particularly when you get into higher education, what it, how it helps in the economy. No details yet, just, I think, education. If we had to get rid of everything else, education, we ought not to be getting rid of. Number two, running right next to that would be the budget stuff, meaning, I think, our tax policy and philosophy around spending and what we provide for. Number three would be human service end of things, particularly toward kids and families who are in need. Number four would be environmental things, and I certainly won't go into detail about that because that's just pretty much, that's expensive. But I think it's something that you can't throw out the window. I think we're in a real dilemma this year because there's no money and I think everybody knows that. My concern, I'm not concerned that the three of us can't work together. I think we have, we're very capable of working together to come up with some solutions, particularly in terms of the budget and some of the other categories that have been mentioned, including Vermont Yankee. My, from the historical perspective, I'm a little bit worried about all the talk about making tough decisions because we had tough decisions to make last year, at least one. And I think for those folks who chose to vote to override the governor's veto of a budget that we knew had a seventy, eighty million dollar deficit in it, which has grown, from my perspective, makes it difficult to think about, where do we go now? Where are we going to go with this now that we're, we've got twice that amount? Our era funds run out in 2012. Our liabilities, our promises do not. So when we're talking about education, for example, the era funds from the federal government are, have helped ease that property tax burden a bit. But when that thirty-eight million, I think it is, Melvin may remember what I think, thirty-eight point three or something like that, when that runs out, if we haven't made some decisions, tough decisions that have to be made around education, we're going to be talking the same story that we've been doing for the last several years. And that is making promises that we either can't keep or worse than that, that we know in advance we can't keep and so we won't have solved anything. Some education things that I think are very important to consider, as since we're talking about the budget or this, I think now is the time to start looking at the pre-K through sixteen education system. And lo and behold, we're doing that. The Vermont State College System, University of Vermont and others are coming up with a report in January that will take a look at how we ought to be looking at education, pre-K through sixteen, meaning college. I think that's very important. I don't suspect that, that one of their things is going to be, and we've just, we figured out how to save half of what we spend on education. I don't think that's going to happen, but I think it's a good start. I think we've got to take a serious look this year, educationally speaking, at things like allowing charter schools, allowing kids to, parents to make choices between schools, and that isn't to run down any local schools. But if you want to, we're being charged with bending the curve on education spending. There's only a couple of ways to do that. Either you start getting rid of a lot of people in education because of course that's where the real cost is, or and/or you allow people some flexibility on where they go. And if the state is paying the bill, why wouldn't we pay, why wouldn't we be just as happy to pay some kids expenses at a school that costs seventy-five hundred as opposed to going to a school where they cost ten? Seems to me that has to be considered. I'm not, I'm not saying that, you know, I'm going to leave the state house if that doesn't happen. But it seems to me those kind of things have got to be considered. The consolidation in education is already being considered and I heard before I came up here tonight that the state board has, is pushing a huge consolidation, talking about going from two hundred and ninety-some odd school districts down to fewer than a couple of dozen. So the problem there, I'm not opposed to that and I think it's got to be considered. Of course, the problem is, the caveat is, we don't know that that's going to save any money. I think the biggest thing about education for you folks is I think it's time for us to come up with a new funding system. Easy to say, hard to do. We've been working on that for a number of years. But I think this year of all years is going to be very important for the three of us and Harold and everybody else that we can pull together to put our heads together and say, look, this is about funding of education. This is not about my philosophy or Claire's philosophy. Claire and I could come to terms with it, I think, but, but I think it's going to be very important to do that. And in all fairness, I think, based on the, what we've been through with the funding system in Vermont for education, we probably are going to have to go through that every ten or twelve years. I mean, Act sixty started out fine and then it, you know, it's it. Or let's say the expenses are out of control because people's taxes are, are so adversely affected by this. So I think it's time to look at some other systems now. I think that we'll do that. I can't guarantee you what will happen, but I think you folks ought to be pushing us to make sure that there is a new funding system that is fair and equitable and doesn't tear down completely the educational structure that we've got now, meaning everything that we're doing in schools is not bad. Some reading scores aren't good, something, but it's not all bad. We think our kids generally are getting a pretty good education across the state and I think that I think you need to, everybody, our, our district needs to hold our feet to the fire and make sure that we are productive. That we're not continuing to encourage deficit spending and that we do in fact make some tough decisions. I think our first thought in the legislature the last few years has been, we know that we're in dire straits. Which tax can we find to raise? And I think we're way past that. I think we've got to, I think we've got to stop that and start thinking about what programs should, are we responsible for? I think that all of us would agree that providing a safety net for people in Vermont is very important. There are some of us who feel that when the safety net begins to encompass the whole state, there's, that it's time to take a look at stuff. So I don't have any specific programs. I'm, I'm not looking to slash and burn anything. But I am looking to make sure that we don't raise educational taxes. You've seen Richie Westman's latest report that the education tax could go up twenty-two cents in the next three years. I mean, I don't, I believe him. I think that's true. I think we're making, I think we can't allow that to happen, which means we've got to take a look at the system and figure out a better way to do it.
I would ask the council, ask to be recognized if you have a question for any of the representative or senators. Please. Show your hand and direct the question either at one or all three. Deal. We'll leave it taken from the.
Some of y'all may know them, Chair of the Virginia Republican Party and last year we got a grant to help us rewrite an account plan between about fifteen thousand dollars. It was super, super helpful to this community. Indeed, I, I, I think the city feels proud of the work that granted to the Department of Health and Community Affairs, let us do. Was distraught to find this fall that source of funding for planning purposes has vanished. And it's put us in a bit of a hard place and we're going to be going to the city council and trying to scrap up some money from that. But know that those dollars that you're saving at the state level are, they're, that trickles downhill and it's going to hit us at the city level. Try and draw a bunch of money, so that's what I'm saying. Thanks.
Thanks, Chair.
Well, yeah, just a few things. Obviously, City of Virginia does things a little bit different. You know, Greg and Diane know this, but for you, Claire, our, our budget system, adoption process is different than most other towns. We have a representative form of government, so therefore, Town Meeting Day is really a time to elect folks to sit on the board, hear from representatives. It's not a time that we adopt our budget. It's not until June when the city council sets the tax rate. They have the authority to set the tax rate and adopt the budget pretty soon this year. So when you're in the, when you're in the legislature, on the one hand, we have a little bit of an advantage because unlike some towns have to adopt their budget in March and you are in full session and it's like throwing darts, you know, trying to put a budget and I, I don't envy those folks faced with that. Having said that, that's not to say that our job is totally easy. And at some point, the city council does adopt a budget and we move forward and there are some state revenue streams there that do affect the budget. I recall, as you do, a year or so ago, or a year ago, when you were faced with shortfalls from gas acts and municipalities suffered a reduction in what they told they were going to receive, which I, which may have been the first time in the history of Vermont when the legislature in essence told municipalities what they were going to receive. And you used to have one hundred percent confidence that what you were told was going to be there. We saw that that didn't occur. Some towns passed resolutions fighting that thing. I went to this board and said, no, I don't recommend that this board fight that. To me, I think the legislature ought to be applauded that if they really only have ninety percent, ninety-seven percent of the money, don't fool us by sending us one hundred when you really don't have it. So if that means that we have to cut a little bit of expenses to deal with that, so be it. Having said that, early communication is critical, all right? The earlier, you know, it's like, you know, good news can come anytime, bad news needed early, as early as I possibly can. Relative to pilot, for the viewers, pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes. City of Virginia, because of Job Corps and other state-owned properties, we're one of the more significant receivers, if you will, of pilot funds. That's another area that if the state sees that they need to make some cuts and let's say that pilot is one of those areas that's cut, that is absolutely transferred to the property tax. It's a line item in our budget. We don't take that money and do anything other than include it on our revenue page. That's what we do. There's lots of other minor, you know, I think of, you know, Lister's Education, Neil brought up planning, planning grant money that we benefited from. I think of the downtown designation funds. You know, I have a project sitting on my credenza, which is either a 2010 or 2011. And this is a project, you know, a downtown street skate project, you know, one of the final phases of this multi-year project, very much dependent on those dollars. And that is a sharing. It's not a hundred percent state funding as, as you know. It's a fifty percent match from the downtown transportation funds. The way that we've done it in Virginia, twenty-five percent has come locally and then twenty-five percent has come from most affected property owners. That's how we've done those projects, like through a partnership of state, town and private individuals. So those things are important to us. Probably the most important thing, not that those aren't important to me, the most important thing is to, is restraining tran, the transfer of cost. And what I, what I mean by that is if you don't have enough money to balance your budget, one way to do it is to underfund education or underfund the state tax adjustment. So in essence, you adopt the budget by transferring the cost to the municipality and really, at the end of the day, nothing's been accomplished on any kind of a transfer. So when I hear about going to shift teachers' retirement to school districts, all right? From the education fund to school district, that's a tax transfer, is what that is. It's not really doing anything. All you're doing is moving a problem from, from this bucket here to this bucket here. It's just a comment to me, I would just, in all due respect, ask that you pinch yourself. If it, if it looks like a transfer, it probably is a shift and you should guard against that. I just want to throw that out to you.
Sure, I just want to, just, just to kind of recap on that. I appreciate Melvin because some of the work in our committee directly affected that fund and I really appreciated the fact that you understood where we thought we had the money at the beginning, we didn't, and how that, and how that ended up. Because let me give you a little bit of a recap that some of us got on, update on the fiscal picture for the state. In, in the fiscal year of 2009, we had, as a state, that means all of us together, we had a 143 million dollar deficit to fill before we could leave. As you know, Vermont, unlike any other, we will, we cannot leave an unbalanced budget. So we have to keep restructuring as things shift to meet that, the, the new, the new number of target, just like your household checkbook. Our checkbook was shifting every single month, you know, every three months we were learning a new number. And just as soon as we would balance to that, again, it would, it would shift. But in a fiscal year of '09, we had a 143 million dollar deficit. That was adjusted with sixty, sixty-eight million dollars in cuts. We used a seventy-five million dollars in error funds. In 2010, we had to, in that budget, fill a 316 million dollar deficit hole. We're not going to be able to come up with, you know, 450 million dollars worth of the hole, unfortunately, without impacting a lot of what goes on in the state. We're not quite that big, but we do try to do our best around spreading it around. That year, we had 99 million dollars in cuts. We did raise revenues at that point of 26 million. We used 175 million dollar error funds. Realizing there, those are one, they're going to be gone as we go through, but they did buy us some time to work on adjusting again. And then since then, an FYI-10 budget had to be adjusted again for another 5.8 million. So that's where we've come through the time. We are looking at, going into this session, another, on top of everything else, another 241 to 261 million dollar deficit, just going into day one. Of that, we're going to be able to use the last of, of what we had of the 100 million dollar error funds. So we've got 141 million dollar hole to fill on the general budget, day one. Transportation budget is fine. But that's, that's looking at a lot of holes. There's some offsets. People are working already to figure out how. I just hope that we can do the work that we're going to do on this budget in a way that respects the values of those that we represent in Vermont and takes care of the people we need to take care of and the promises. And I agree with you, Mel. If it, if it's a transfer, it's just moving the problem from one box to the other. We get, we get a pass on showing that we, we've balanced it, but we haven't, we haven't done the job of, of, of keeping it off of the taxpayers' back. It's, it'll get rough here.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I send you out with a challenge. How would you put that to me?
Before you go, this is what, my opinion, and I have a right to, I guess. All these economists that come up and tell you we got a problem, we know we got a problem. Put them to work trying to fill the cup instead of emptying the cup. Have them come with ideas and solutions to the problems, not telling us about something we already know about because they're wasting everybody's time.
Well, that's what we're supposed to.
That's my mess.
We're, we're supposed to be doing that in the legislature, make, legislature to make sure that we try to help fill that cup with, with whatever solutions that we can come up with. And I think you'll find, I'm not sure that we're going to solve completely right away the deficit problem, but I think you take the three of us and others who are willing to put their heads together, I think, now and say, here's the way to do it. And it is, the answer in my mind, personal feeling here, the answer is never, how much money is government going to spend? What's government going to do? I agree with Ron Reagan, who said government's the problem, not the solution. But, but for Vermont, I just think, talking to business people, as limited, though I have been in talking with these folks, it's the idea of, let us, let us do what we can do. Don't overtax us. Don't overburden us with regulations. Let us and we'll bring it back. So I'm not sure how that translates into real programs yet, but.
We need to.
Just, just when we leave here, we may be out of your sight for the moment, but you can please call us and email. We're there.
My comment is, is the opinion is, this is an era of cooperation and not an era of political divides. You have to reach across the aisle to solve this problem. We're not, we're not getting any stronger with the political wrangling that's going on. That should cease because you are, like I am, an elected official.
Well, I'm hoping that we're in tough enough straits so that we will be reaching across the aisle. It's been extremely polarizing the last couple of years and very, very negative as far as I'm concerned. Is that, you know, I think Democrats have the numbers, so the rest of us feel as though we're somehow superfluous. I don't think Claire feels that way, but I think that when you get through the process, you know, you can feel that way. And I got a ton of stuff, as others do, hanging on the wall for years on education stuff that we didn't even, we wouldn't even discuss because the Democrats aren't in favor of it, including charter schools. I don't, I don't want to start a charter school, but it seems to me that we ought to talk about it in the legislature.
I, I urge you to continue to spend money in moderation. Urge the taxpayers to spend money in moderation. That's what's going to get us out of this. If we keep pulling back, it's just going to compound the issue. I realize there's a point, but you need to continue to spend in moderation. And so, and of course locally, not from businesses from outside of the state. So I think we need to, it may cost us a few pennies extra to take and buy something from somebody from within state, but that's keeping the money local. And that's going to take and come back in our pocket, not in other states.
So, any other comments from the council? If not, we really appreciate you coming tonight and sharing some information with us, um.
Bye.
And Diane's going to stay?
Yes.
You're welcome to stay if you'd like, uh, Diane's got another hat she has to put on in, uh, in a few minutes, so we'll go with her.
Bring a hat, thank you very much for inviting us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So much easy.
Okay. Next one we're going to move to is, uh, for Gens partnership, uh, who's taking lead, Jackson or Bill?
Both.
All right.
We're going to speak in tandem.
Got a couple of things that came out, and there's some of you who were, um, particularly last Wednesday. And this is one of the same documents, he said he already got it, just passing it on. The other is the three-year work plan that was just finished and approved, um, about a month ago or so. And I gather from talking to Mel that, I guess I saw you maybe five or six months ago, so wanted to come back, touch base, um. I think that what we're, we're in the right, going in the right direction at this point, you know, when we asked for some money back in May or June. You were great about supporting the partnership, recognizing the importance of the downtown program and so on. Uh, we went through the summertime, mostly meeting with Liang Tingge from the downtown program, uh, going over their requirements, putting together the work plan. Uh, Mel was in a few meetings, he was great, yeah, I think we have a lot of, we agree on a lot of things, as to what the city wants to do, where we can help and so on. Um, we had some pros with attendance in some meetings in the fall, and we realized we needed to kind of reach out and get some more supporters. Um, we had this lender last Wednesday, the Antidote, uh, sent emails to people, uh, Facebook, um, some posters and so on, had a great turnout. We were hoping for twenty or thirty people, and had about forty people. Uh, Randy was there, the mayor was there, Mel was there. You didn't hear about it, I apologize, it was, we only have so many ways of communicating, but we want to get everybody involved. If you're not on the email list, we'd like to put you on. Um, and we really just kind of introduced a lot of new people to the partnership, what we want to do, the, the single page you've got as our mission statement, um, things we've done in the past, talks with the downtown program. And from this point forward, I think in the next three or four months, um, we really want to tackle some issues where we can hopefully make a difference, um, particularly when spring hits. We've got some, um, members that are concerned about parking downtown, and we're trying to look into some solutions there, want to talk to the police chief about that and see what we might be able to do to keep, uh, these parking spaces open, particularly in the summertime. Uh, there's some recreational issues, uh, we're trying to do an inventory of vacant spaces. I think our primary focus now is to build, uh, kind of a, a, a positive attitude towards, um, business in downtown Gens, build some vacant storefronts. Uh, try and have landlords be creative in terms of the spaces they have and getting, uh, potential business owners to help they need in terms of entrepreneurship and so on. Um, we also work about, we're up to the streetscape improvements, again with Mel. So, it's, we've been meeting once a month, um, I think we're at the point now where we've got a good support group of people, um, we've got a plan to work from. And hopefully this summer, we can actually, you know, get the ground running. Jackson, do you have anything else you want to?
Yeah, I mean, the, the last, the last few months have really been getting our feedback underneath the organization after the period of dormancy that we had. So a lot of it was working on the work plan that we, that Bill passed out, working with the state and sort of communicating back and forth what the expectations are, what's, what's realistic for our organization at this time, given, you know, that I, I, I'm, I'm working eight hours a week. Anyone who's ever tried to do anything for eight hours a week knows you can do about three or four emails, and that's, you know, that's it. So you're, you know, we're sort of under that, those types of constraints too. So building, uh, building the board, building a network of volunteers who can help us carry out some of these projects has been, um, you know, one of the, the big focuses over the last few months. I think we're at a really good point right now. We had, you know, the, the lender was terrific, we, we built our mail, you know, we added about forty people to the mailing list who weren't involved before. Had a lot of great verbal feedback from people, um, and really was able to get some of the, some of the younger families, younger, you know, uh, parents who have kids in schools, who own businesses, et cetera, involved. Who hadn't been involved before, so I think it was, it was a great, um, if not informal effort to get, to get the word out and to get some names onto a list. So we're, I think by spring, we'll be, we'll hit the ground running with some, some visual, visible projects that, that show, you know, real accomplishment and further the, the mission for this organization.
I don't know what, I know what Facebook is, but I'm not a member. Jackson opened a Facebook account for the partnership and has all these people that are talking about things, which I know nothing about, but.
It's terrific.
It is, I mean, the whole next generation, it's a whole different way of communicating, but.
So we're, we're pleased, I mean, I think we're pleased with.
Yeah, I, I thi- I think that, you know, we find we're at a point where we feel pretty comfortable about actually having some resources and some, and some, uh, uh, volunteers that can help us. Anyone have any questions, be happy to answer them, um.
Couple of, uh, one of the, one, a couple of comments I have, and that's one about, uh, parking for employees. Uh, went for a walk this last night, and I saw, when I was walking by certain locations, employees parking on the, on the street where customers could.
Big amount of potential, a lot of people, yes.
And, uh, I know that I, I, uh, look on Saturday mornings and, uh, on Main Street and on the side streets, it's, it's employees that are filling the street, uh, so.
Well, it's, it's also business owners too.
Yep, yep, so if, if, but if we can get them to park a little bit farther out and promote healthy living and walk a few extra feet, then that will also keep hopefully those spaces open for, uh, customers.
We've actually talked with some other towns, trying to get some ideas as to how you can do this without creating, you know, this animosity kind of thing. And, and I think that it's a matter of educating the people that are parking there, um, and having them understand that it's in their best interests to actually not park right in front, you know, or in front of your next door neighbor's store, if you want to park in front of your store.
Yeah, that's.
You know, and it's a courtesy thing, but I think that that's one of our priorities coming up.
Or parking apps on second street, that was in the business.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing is my wife is enthused and she's forward to, uh, hopefully being part of, uh, the brainstorming session and some of the stuff that might go forth.
Great, great.
You know, I think if you get a lot of good particip- uh, participation, if you throw out some more information like you did, have another planning session.
Yeah, I think next time what we'll do is, is send out a bulletin about some specific issues, get together here, um, with whoever's interested in that particular topic, and really try and, um, work through some, um, you know, some specific areas that we want to tackle and how to go about doing it. And that's the next, that's what we'll be doing this weekend, I think.
Good. Um, any questions, if either of you, Jackson? If not, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thanks. We'll come back.
If, if you gentlemen would like to put something together for, uh, the, the town meeting, a table or something, uh, by all means, uh, talk to me about it. Because, uh, I've got several groups that want to be presenters, and we're going to take and figure out how we're going to be able to, uh, meet their needs, so.
Thank you.
All right, great, excellent. Um, Addison County Transportation Resources. It's not any warmer in the front seat than it is in the back, it's all the same temperature. It's not any warmer up front than it is at the back.
Uh, I'm Jim Moltke, I'm the executive director of Addison County Transit, thank you for having us before the council. The last time we were here, um, was in the spring, uh, around that time, we were talking to you about, um, expansion grant that we were applying for with the agency of transportation. And at that point in time, we were hoping that council would commit some funds, um, to help us leverage that grant. As it turns out, uh, the rest of our application was strong enough, uh, so that even without, uh, a full commitment from, uh, the city for some local match funds, we did get the grant to, um, expand our service, and, um, that's very exciting news from us. In fact, we actually ended up with, um, three grants for, um, expanded service. Our top priority, which is up to date for the last few years, creating direct service between Virgens and Middlebury, and increasing the frequency of service, uh, between, um, the tri-town region, uh, Virgens, Bristol and Middlebury. Um, so we, uh, were able to do that, um, and, uh, we're very excited about that. The second grant we got was to, um, expand the Middlebury Shallow Bus, which actually has a great benefit to Virgens and Bristol as well, because not only will we be able to bring people into Middlebury for work purposes, but then we'll be able to distribute them seamlessly to their jobs within Middlebury without any waiting at the transfer station, without them to walk to their jobs. They can just get right on the transfer bus and go where they need to go. Um, and the third actually also has, um, a benefit to Virgens. It's, we have, um, we operate Saturday service between, um, Middlebury and Burlington, which also comes, um, through Virgens. CCTA, as you may know, Virginia County operates the Monday through Friday commuter service, we operate the Saturday service. And we received a small grant to double that service, so that will, um, double the opportunity for Virgens residents to get to and from Burlington on weekends. So, um, it's all fantastic news, it's, uh, a little overwhelming, uh, but very exciting. And, uh, one week after learning the news of that grant, of course, uh, the Champlain Bridge was closed, which has thrown us into additional service, um, providing, um, alternate transportation for all those commuters, or a portion of those commuters who are going to cross the bridge, um, into Virgens in particular, but as well into Middlebury. And you, I hope you're all aware that, um, a week after the bridge closed, we began a partnership with the Basin Harbor Club as they launched pedestrian ferry service from Westport to their club. We provided the bus service from there here into Virgens. Uh, when the Basin Harbor Club had to close their ferry, uh, last week or day, actually, um, because of the rising level of the lake, we now shifted our bus service up to the Charlotte Ferry and are continuing to bring folks into, um, Virgens in particular. That's actually an ivory destination, uh, to work and take them home at the end of the day. So, we have been very actively involved in that, um, in, uh, less than seven weeks, we've already provided twenty-five hundred rides, um, all career rides, so, um, a lot of people are using it on a daily basis. Um, and we have this additional expansion, uh, that's planned now. We are, um, the grant funds have started, they started in October, and we are looking to actually implement the service as of, uh, February first. That's our goal right now, we've held four public hearings, we had one in Virgens, one in Bristol, one in Middlebury College and one in Middlebury proper, um, hitting the primary constituents, uh, who benefit from the services that we're offering. And now we are compiling that information, taking our original proposals, tweaking them based on that feedback, so that, um, we know that the service we're putting on the road is really representative of what folks want and what folks perceive they need. Um, and then we'll be getting the schedules out and making people aware of that, so they're, through the holidays, it sort of takes time for that all to happen. So, um, the goal again is, uh, February first for a launch date, um, and for Virgens in particular, the tri-town expansion. Right now, there are six trips between Virgens and Middlebury, um, through Bristol on a daily basis, uh, three in the morning, three in the afternoon. That will increase to five in the morning, five in the afternoon. Right now, they run on a two-hour headway meeting. If you miss the bus now, the next bus comes two hours later. Will be increasing the frequency, so that if you miss the bus now, the next bus comes an hour later. Hopefully people aren't missing the bus, but what it really does is it provides people with more options of when they want to go. Because if you work at nine o'clock to arrive at Middlebury Eight on a bus, you've got to wait for an hour. But if the next bus is going to get you to nine, it's right on time, and it works for you. So it'll be a lot more user-friendly, um, in two ways for Virgens residents. One, the frequency goes up, and two, the direct route to Middlebury, uh, which is something that, um, we've talked about with this council for a few years now.
I, I just want to state that this is, uh, a, a, a big leap for act- I mean, this is a forty percent increase in services to Virgens, which I get very excited about. And it's, it's another big step in providing a reliable on-time, something that, that the citizens can rely on, that is going to be there for them in the future, um, as they plan their commute.
And actually, one slight correction, the forty percent is, we're getting forty percent more funds from this, these three grants that are coming in than we have currently for our shuttle bus system as a whole. Because we're not expanding everything, for example, our Rutland service is going to be the same, our service to the Snowball is going to be the same. The actual impact on Virgens is going to be a sixty-eight percent increase in service, so it's going to be very significant. It's going to be really transformational in terms of the opportunity that Virgens folks will have, um, for, uh, increased public transportation service. One of the things that, that I was certainly paying attention to as the legislators spoke to you and provided their, um, preview of the legislative session is how tight money is, how difficult it is, um, and clearly the, the biggest, uh, publicity is around what's happening at the state level, but as you clearly are aware, there's a trickle-down effect, um, either directly or indirectly sometimes, about what happens at the municipality level.
And I could honestly, I can add to that, that as money came in for transportation and stimulus money, um, the powers that believe, at the federal level, uh, support public, uh, transit to the point that they restricted the state's ability to use, uh, funding outside of it. So we, uh, so public transit did receive some very nice, uh, uh, funding that was specific for, for statewide use.
Yes. So, um, one of the things that, um, one of the reasons that I've come back, or we've come back to you, is that one of the messages that we heard when we spoke to you in the spring was that you, you weren't willing to, um, formally sign on a dotted line in terms of providing dollars and support. At that time, based on our original budget projections, before we had put in our final, um, applications, we were asking for, um, three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in additional support over and above what Virgens has already committed. After the fact, after the grants, after the applications, everything. It turns out that what we actually would need from the city for, um, its fair share, which I'll elaborate on in a moment, is actually eighteen hundred dollars a year. So, if nothing else, your decision to hold off on committing support has made it easier to come back and say, in fact, what we really need is, um, less than half of what we originally came, uh, and requested at that time. Now, uh, just a, uh, I guess a brief review of how the, um, formula that we figure out to allocate and ask our municipalities. We, uh, do a countywide evaluation of all the municipalities, of all the services that are out there and all the services that they're receiving, that allocated based on, um, total population, populations of transit-dependent folks, um, so all those factors go into it, and then we come out with, uh, a percentage for each municipality that would be its fair share. What that goes off is, these grants are eighty, twenty grants, and you may be familiar with other transportation projects that the city has done. It means eighty percent is funded by the grant, twenty percent needs to be funded locally. When we go out to seek our twenty percent, what we ask the municipalities for is actually five percent, so it's actually one quarter of that matching amount. So, uh, while we are asking municipalities to support it, we also recognize that they're not the only direct beneficiaries of the service that we're providing. We, we get it from institutions like Middlebury College, we get it from businesses, um, either through advertising or just through general sponsorships. We get it through individual donations, we get it through the, way, we get it in many different forms, uh, based on the constituencies that we are serving and, um, uh, and the services that we're providing. So, um, when we come to any municipality, Virgens or otherwise, it's really just a fraction of the amount. So, um, the, uh, the eighteen hundred dollars that I mentioned is really that five percent share. It's actually leveraging for the, the full grant is seventy-seven thousand dollars of service for the tri-town. So you're really getting a significant benefit back in terms of dollars for that small amount. The other thing that I think is really important, different than, um, the idea of placing a burden on the taxpayers about actors, there's a real opportunity for payback of the tax dollars that they're investing. An example I would give is if, uh, the eighteen hundred dollars, for example, actually comes out to less than a dollar per resident, just as an example. And not that the dollar is necessarily a lot or a little out of their face pocket, but if you ride the tri-town from Virgens to Middlebury, and it's the direct service, it would cost you about four dollars in gasoline alone. Just so if you ride it down back, you've saved four dollars in gasoline for the one dollar that you've invested. Even if you factor in full fares of a dollar down and a buck dollar back, between your one tax dollar for the year, your two dollars in fares, you've spent three dollars, which you've actually put four dollars back into your pocket by not driving your car. And that's on the first trip. Every other trip after that, you just continue to be able to. Every other trip after that, you just continue to be able to save money. And that's something we're talking about the way our tear on vehicles. So, I think it's really important to recognize that while tax dollars do support Actor and support what we do, we are unique in some ways in that we actually can provide the opportunity for people to save money, save more than their tax dollar investment. So, it really is more like an investment as opposed to a subsidy. So, as well as sort of this broad education that I'm just trying to bring more information to you so everybody understands how we're funded and what those funds mean in terms of services that you're going to see on the road, and also what those funds mean in terms of actual potential cost to individual residents. One of our hopes was to come back and say, at this point in time, the message that we heard when we left in the spring was, if you get the grants, come back to us and we'll see if we can support you in this year ten. So, that was the message we heard, and so we wanted to come back and see if that's a possibility within the current budget that you have, looking at what you're doing, whether there might be some funds that could support us towards that eighteen hundred dollar annualized amount. The second sort of financial piece along with that is, one of the messages we also heard in the spring was that our request came to you too late in the year. And while you're very far away still from your budget process, as Mel pointed out earlier, you don't even do it in tri-town meeting, you're doing it for May, June. We want to at least make sure that you had a better understanding of what our requests were, what the services are, so that you have it at least in your mind as you go into the budget-making process. And it doesn't come as a surprise to you that it's you, because that certainly was not our intent at that time. So, the last point that I might make on that is that Diane and I had an opportunity to meet with Mel last week to sort of mount some ideas on and talk to him about the eighteen hundred dollars. And one of the points that I hadn't thought through completely at that point was, the grant that we have in place now actually started in October, so it's not a full year that we're talking about. It's from October to June, it's really nine months or three quarters of that amount. So, the amount that we might see if the city council was able to provide in this year was actually thirteen hundred and fifty dollars for this year. But it would move to eighteen hundred dollars on an annualized basis from July first to twenty-four for the next budget year. One other point on the fair share formula, when I was first starting that process for this coming year, I didn't know about the grants. And as I ran through all the numbers and everything, the amount that we would be asking from any municipality going forward for next year without these major grants would have actually been exactly the same. We would have been asking for level funding for next year between controlling our own expenses by adding new revenue streams outside of municipalities. We would have been coming back to you for level funding. So, the eighteen hundred is the amount that we need over and above to support the expansion. Again, that's providing a sixty-three percent increase in the shuttle bus sponsorship. So, I probably should stop there, I can provide you with a lot of information. I have some handouts if people are interested in particular information, either services we've provided to you or what the expansion might look like, but I also don't want to overwhelm you with paper, if you don't want.
Like, one thing, when I met with Diane and Jim, which really was more helpful, was some financial statements. One of the things that I think there may have been a little bit of confusion, and I'm going to be the first one to stand in that line of confusion, because I, when Jim starts talking about, well, a dollar and they save four dollars, one of the, you know, these two things that comes to my mind and maybe comes to others say, well, it really doesn't work that way. We send out property tax bills, people don't give us a dollar. And then, it's not like poll tax in Virgens, you know? So, people, the twenty-eight hundred, twenty-eight hundred people don't give us a dollar. It's all about property taxes, so the dollar doesn't quite flow that way. But, one of the things that I learned in meeting with them is, the other thing we think of, well, jeez, if they're saving four dollars in gas, why don't you just get the dollar from them and they're going to save the money? And I'm going to explain this, and please correct me for wrong, because I think I understand it. The way that this program works with the eighty-twenty is, is let's say if you have a hundred thousand dollar service and you have a grant that's eighty-twenty, eighty, eighty thousand dollar grant and a twenty percent local share, right? And you say, well, what we'll do is we'll backfill the twenty with fares. It's like, no, it doesn't work that way. The fares go up on top, if your anticipated fares are twenty thousand dollars, then really you have a net expense of eighty. And then you apply the eighty-twenty, all right? So, you end up, eighty thousand times eighty percent equals sixty-four thousand. And then twenty percent of eighty thousand is sixteen thousand. So, the point is, is that that twenty thousand dollars didn't make the twenty thousand disappear on the bottom. What it did is, is it made four thousand dollars disappear on the bottom, just the way that the system works. It's an eighty-twenty program, and Actor, to be able to meet that local share, they have to go out and get it. And it's not like they've been looking for municipalities to pay for one hundred percent of that twenty percent local share. But as Jim said, they've gone off and found businesses that need and support this program. And at the end of the day, they've knocked on every door and they come up with whatever they come to. And so, there's this hole, if you will, that needs to be filled, and that's what they look for municipalities to fill.
Commitment by Actor to go out and find the fifteen percent, not, not to kind of backfill saying, oh, well, this year we only found ten, so we're going to come to the municipalities for, we're going to make, they've made a commitment as a board and as an entity to go and find the fifteen percent elsewhere and to not look to the municipalities for anything more than the five percent.
Yeah, and that, I appreciate both of the points. Briefly yours, the board in fact has stated upfront that we're going to hold the line on the five percent. That's, that's what the municipality share should be, and the rest does have to come from our, so it has been some explicit statement at the board level. And I appreciate your, your point, Mel, because you, you, I must have done a really good job that day, because you got it right on the-
Caught me on the day I was paying attention.
You got it right on the head, you know? There is this natural inclination to say, well, why don't, you know, you just charge fares, and, and that's the problem. Sort of the, it's a federal, it's the way the feds obligate us to operate the services. And it's the same for every rural system in the nation. I don't understand it, it's just the rules we unfortunately have to play by.
In the big picture, you know, we went from the hundred thousand, you know, the eighty percent would have been eighty. So, in this picture, in that scenario, the fares knocked it down to sixty-eight. So, on my side, I'm doing better.
So.
Is, any, any other questions?
I'm just curious on how this is going to tie in with the service to the ferries. Are we going to get a ferry at Crown Point and will you be servicing that ferry?
Yes.
Both that and the Charlotte, and will this, will this system tie in with that?
Well, I can tell you that when the ferry between Chimmy Point and Crown Point goes into place, we will be providing service for that. What I'm not sure right now is whether, my assumption is that the folks who are now coming across on the Charlotte Ferry will shift themselves to the Chimmy Point ferry, that would be their preference because it'd be shorter time. We will continue to provide service into Virgens on that. We have been providing what we call dial-in ride service also, which is for people who are going to less populated areas. An example would be somebody who might be going to Business in Addison, where we would send a volunteer driver out to pick this person up and bring them there. It makes no sense to run a bus, it's one or two people on the ride. We implemented that, in particular from the Thai ferry, and a lot of that's going into Middlebury and places around it, to the point where we may now be looking at implementing bus service because the volume is growing. And I mention that because it's likely we'll then be providing bus service from the Chimmy Point into Middlebury as well. So, there will be sort of an opportunity for tie-in in both directions. What the actual times would be as compared to the times of the expanded system, that's an excellent question. I hadn't thought that far ahead, the New York service is still so kind of new and overwhelming and really focused on making sure that those people can get to their jobs so that their lives are a little more normal than they would have been. But, I would, what it is, that's something I can now look at and see how the time fits, because if they are, well, working out well.
Are people connecting in Virgens at this point? You said most, the majority of that service is workers coming to Virgens.
Yes.
I presume to Goodrich and?
Goodrich, yeah.
Job for, so forth. But, and are people now connecting here and taking the bus onto Middlebury, or are there some service to Middlebury?
I am not aware, but they've actually come in and then connected with the current tri-town service. As I had to explain unfortunately earlier, is that the service we provide right now is not as good as it could be or should be. What we do is we're running two loops every morning. That second loop goes into Middlebury, and we do have some people who are taking it all the way into Middlebury at that Thai ferry. But, we've basically been asked by the two agencies of transportation, Vermont and New York, to essentially be ready to do the next thing at any moment's notice. A good example being with the Basin Harbor ferry, said, you know, on Tuesday morning, this is the last day we can do this because of rising water. We scrambled to make sure that there was no break in the service, we provided service from the Charlotte point the next day. So, we may be asked at any moment, even here's the video, Chimmy Point is going to places next week, we need buses from there. It's been very challenging.
I'm just going to add to that, as, as information and things shift almost daily down there, what's, and what's happening, it's going to be like an on-demand issue, like Jim, and many of the other entities have been very, very quick to respond to as situations present themselves, natural traffic patterns and what people need. It's assessed almost every other day as to try to respond to, not to overrespond too much, but yet as we see the need to see if we can develop those links, both with public transit, ferry systems and whatever else, and including with the, the New York side. Everything that's happening here on the Vermont side is also, has to be somewhat coordinated with the transit service in New York at Essex County. So, as people make, make the leap off the bus on that side to get on the ferry, to make the link here, there's an awful lot of coordination with a lot of entities at play. And they are all very willing to adjust almost every other day to what is currently being presented on the ground as need. And a lot of hard work going into that, we might leave a gap here and there, but it'll be adjusted so far. We haven't, we haven't done much.
Jim, you said to finish out this year, you'd need thirteen block?
Fifty.
Thirteen fifty?
Yes.
I'd ask for motion to appropriate thirteen, one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to Actor for this portion of, to finish out the year.
I'd like to offer that motion. And I'll second.
And motion by Joe, seconded by Lowell, open for discussion.
Do we have a?
Yeah, I mean, we're fine, I mean, I'll, I'll get into the results of our audit, we're fine. Obviously, it's not our practice to overspend the line item, that's what I would do here. I'm not going to charge you anything other than the, other than that line. The budget is forty-six hundred and fifty, obviously, if this motion passes, that line's been outgrown by thirteen hundred and fifty dollars and, yeah, we deal.
Any questions? Any other ones? Andy?
I got this nagging suspicion, hopefully it isn't, that will the kid this grant be canceled?
That's an ex- that's an excellent question, and thank you. Something for me is like, I never know, I don't want to provide you too much information, but on that particular question, the grant, when it originally starts, is a three-year pilot project. So, we're provided with guaranteed funding for three years to put the service in place, to tweak it along the way, to make it perform. If for any reason at the end of the three years, it doesn't perform, then in theory, the agency of transportation could come and say, okay, this is not a good investment of mine's, we're going to reset the funds. If that happened, we would be in the position of, well, we're coming service back. And in that case, from a budgetary standpoint for Virgens, we would be reducing the amount of funding we would be requesting from you because our wealth matching would shrink. So, from a financial perspective, you know, the, the amount we ask for is directly related to the amount of funds that we have. It wouldn't be good in terms of service, because folks would be used to, you know, expanded service and coming back. But there are two things I would say about that. One is in the eight years that I've been with Actor, there have been expanded services throughout the state. None of those expanded services have been dropped after their three-year period. I don't anticipate that that would happen with our services. The second reason is that the agency actually holds the providers to performance standards. And they develop these standards by polling similar transit systems nationwide. So, these are not kind of like, well, what's happening on, or what's pulling them out here. It's what are systems in other places, how many rides are they providing on an hour basis? What's the cost per ride, or what's the cost per hour benchmark, it's like that. And then they compare them, and they essentially have three systems, three ratings. You either don't meet them, you meet them, or you exceed them, you exceed being the best. And all of Actor's services either meet or exceed those performance benchmarks. So, I'm a performance-oriented type of person, so I have a personal desire to make sure that these services perform. Sometimes that means, well, I put the service on the road this way, and it's not working. So, it needs to be changed, because the people are saying, it really needs to be over here. We do the best we can when we implement, we take as much information as we can, we talk to as many people as we can. But I can guarantee we don't always get it right. But what we try to do is listen on the way and make those adjustments. So, it's a theoretical possibility, but I would say the probability is very low. And if it did ever happen, there would be a tax savings for Virgens and the other municipalities.
Any other questions? Let's move to the questions, all those in favor, this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Foes? You were in favor. So, be it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and for the support.
I could just offer one thing, I, I think that we should go beyond appropriating funds and really try to promote ridership with transportation. Maybe, you know, we just had the partnership and you're talking about parking problems. Now we have an opportunity to bring more people into the town through increased ridership, maybe try to promote that. Maybe the partnership guys aren't here anymore to talk to them about it, but, pardon me?
You're welcome.
Yeah, well, I think it's a great opportunity to, you know, advertise in the paper on the, when the independent has their Virgens advertisement and so forth. Maybe publish the bus schedule, just some thoughts to promote ridership.
We will take you off on that in terms of working both with the council and with the partnership to make sure it is well promoted, so people are aware of it. Thank you very much.
Am I done?
You're not done yet. Short, short, short and sweet energy.
Yeah, the energy, the energy committee, and I apologize, Mel, I think you sent me an email, I saw it on my BlackBerry, you were looking for who's it. I am currently the chair, and it is an entity that was, I was appointed from, from this group. I have to say that if it wasn't for Steve and Margaret Lowell, there wouldn't be much left of the energy committee. My, my ability and time to devote to, to that committee is limited, but although somewhat active. So, we can really thank Steve, Steve Lowell. We just had a button up, Virgens had one at the Bixby Library here on December seventh. It was a little bit less than we had from the last year, but yet still, still well-attended. I think we had about twenty, fifteen to twenty people attend for the evening and hear, hear the presentation. There is at the library a DVD of that that people can check out. It, it's actually pretty good. I watched it a little bit, and you know, it's, I've learned even a little bit more. So, that is there. There's also our appliance load tester is still at the Bixby Library to account for the funds that we have bought. Three, one is with the committee, and one is at the library, and one is with me. So, people can go to the Bixby Library and check out this load tester. I think you may have seen on the federal piece, we're looking at cash for cockers as a potential. So, maybe the energy committee will take a look at that. That's my short and sweet answer for energy.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Now, am I done?
You are done. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, public comment? Neil?
That is a quick comment for this evening. One is to let you know that last Wednesday, the time of usual planning officially approved the start of planning, usually, so cheers to that. No great news reported there, but it's fine. I understand there's some folks or names to be appointed to the planning, which we should, we should talk about this today.
Later on?
Later on. I'm going to, I'll hang out for, for that, if something comes up and we want to talk about it. I'm gonna, I'll hang out for, for that. If, if something comes up and we want to talk about it, uh, I do note that there are three, I think, three names that have been floating around in more or less. I think they're sort of formally two open positions. The law allows for more than that. And, you know, I'm thrilled that so many people want to be part of the planning commission. And would encourage you to appoint more than, more than two. I think that's okay. I just more than married. That's all I can say. Thanks.
Okay. I was trying to look through that on the thing and I couldn't find it. It's like, it's starting to freeze up. Okay, um, we've had the warrants going around. Those were signed. Um, I'd ask for a motion to approve the Virgin City Council meeting for November seventeenth, two thousand nine. Make said motion. Randy made motion. Chris seconded it. Uh, revisions, errors?
I would like to abstain.
And Lowell will abstain? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Mel, budget?
Uh, I'm just gonna speak briefly about the police budget. And I, obviously, we all know we've gone through a transition period with, um, with Chief Lowell getting done back in September. Ted Manal, you know, filling in in essence administratively for a number of months. Ted actually got done working for, for us officially on, on June thirtieth. And when you, when you do the math about, um, not paying a chief of police for X number of months and then paying Ted uh, as a consultant for the, for the police department, it, it actually turned out to be an almost perfect wash. So if you were to look at those two line items, I think one of them was down by seven thousand dollars. That's about where we ended up paying Ted for, for that same period. Obviously Ted wasn't working full-time. Relative to, uh, regular officers, if you look at that line item, I can tell you the key is always to look at the social security line item. If, uh, if you take the number of weeks there that we, that we're at in the year. So let's say we're twenty-three weeks into the year. And you create that math, all you need to do is look at the social security. And if it's, if it's lower than that percentage, then that means you're ahead of the budget. And we're, we're actually ahead of the budget, uh, in police department, surprisingly so. So obviously that one's been a little bit of a concern. Uh, this year's had a little, a few bumps in the road. Uh, one of the things I did, uh, I believe it was a week ago Friday, uh, went line by line with George about what these line items mean. Uh, and I told George, don't take any notes. I'll go through this again within a couple of weeks, right? So, uh, so that he fully understands what each line item is intended for. So that was a good little exercise. So I'm just gonna stick to, uh, stick to place and for the rest of the next evening.
Um, committee reports, I think they're pretty well covered in some of the items we have on our agenda and their whole business.
One did report actually the shoveling, the snow shoveling done by Job Four. Actually, there was a couple of residents have called and, uh, the services.
Good. Excellent. Great. Um, any other thing that's not mentioned in our agenda? If not, we'll keep this moving before we get cross bike. Um, whole business, update, appeal. Mel?
Nothing new there, Mike.
Okay. Virgin's, uh, greatest school dri- district. Mel?
Well, Mel, Mel and Joe.
Mel and Joe?
I think as I mentioned in my notes, uh, I plan to attend the meeting of the graded school district on December twenty-first to speak about the land. Joe, if you can make that meeting, that, that'd be good, Mike. I think you've been going to those if you can. Uh, so that's coming up. Uh, I did supply the board some additional budget, uh, information. And I think Joe will share a little bit of, of his information that Christine had requested from the last meeting.
I spoke with Roland regarding some of the capital issues, some of the maintenance issues that you had questions about. Um, he tells me that they really don't have a budget or any plans for maintenance from year to year. And generally the maintenance costs are fairly low, anywhere from zero to a thousand dollars. Last year they had a grant to paint some benches or something like that. Uh, I asked him about some specific big budget items like the pump. Uh, they have a ten horsepower motor. It's been twenty years since it's been worked on, uh, but in his opinion, it's working very well. I did wanna mention that he did offer to be here this evening. And, uh, we decided that with the agenda being as small as it was, we probably should hold off until January. But he's willing to come and meet and, and discuss those issues with the board. Uh, in two thousand and eight, the electrical panel was, uh, replaced and all new wiring, so that's all, all relatively new. Uh, Barry McDonald did that. He's gonna, the one thing they had recommended was that, uh, had installed alarm light, alarm light in case the power were to go out and, and the pump and the system would have failed. Barry's gonna be installing that apparently. Uh, the building's twenty years old. It's got the original roof, so that may be an issue. Roland said that, um, had indicated that, um, the overhead door may need to, the bottom panel is exposed to chlorine and wears out. And within a couple of years, that may need to be replaced. He has his maintenance manual finished, so hopefully we'll have a chance to go to that. The city workers will have a chance to go to that. He, he had told me some of the companies he worked with, and I did on, on Mel's, uh, advice, I asked him if maybe we should have an inspection done or some kind of that. And he, his, his, he was, that's just, that would be a waste of money. But again, I think, I think that maybe in January, if we have one more time in the agenda, we should play role in, uh, speaking on those things directly.
We have some other discussion to, uh,
Yeah, uh, I mean, I'm gonna take that up with the board. Speaking of graded school district, you know, I think what's kicked around here is that are we at the last year of the debt? Or is there one more year of the debt? And there really is a ten thousand dollar, there is one more year of the debt. And, you know, I mean, I tend to feel, I mean, hopefully the bill goes to the taxpayers, but, uh, and I'll speak to the superintendent. I tend to feel that the graded school district needs to operate for one more year. That's my opinion, but I'm not a superintendent of schools. I don't, I've never dissolved a school. I don't know. But I tend to feel that that's what they really need to do, is to have one more budget year, which would include an audit. And that last budget year may not last a year, all right? It would, it would, it might last six months. The ten thousand dollars is due December of two thousand and ten. So I think the graded school district needs one more year to do an audit of, uh, what in essence would be the, the current year. They are gonna have some legal fees. They've got to, they may have some surveying costs. I think there's, and they have this ten thousand dollars. So I don't think that, you know, when the clock strikes twelve midnight, June thirtieth, two thousand and nine, it, it's unlike, uh, Waltham and Patton School Districts that literally could go poof. Because there really, there wasn't, there's any assets or anything there for Walton and Patton. Virgins actually has assets and a bill in their hand. So I think they may have to exist for another six or eight months. And so there may be one other budget. You, there may need to be another budget at town meeting to cover that. But maybe Tom O'Brien has some other idea. I, I don't know. But obviously if they're looking to hand that bill to us, that ten thousand dollars has been in the graded school district budget. It's not in any of the numbers that Joe and I have shared with you. And obviously if we were going to be inheriting this ten thousand dollar bill, it's a swimming pool bill. It's gonna be in the swimming pool budget. So clearly, uh, as you know, the pool runs on a, say a shoestring. I mean, it ends the year with thirty-seven dollars and twelve cents, you know? So it's not like it can absorb, you know, a ten thousand dollar bill. So that's a real problem. You know, somebody's gotta figure out what the, what the solution is because the bill isn't gonna go away.
What time is the meeting on Monday?
You know, I'm gonna say five-thirty, Joe. I'll have to send you an email. I think, uh, copy me. Okay. For some reason, I think that they meet in advance. They do generally meet in advance of the, uh, elementary school board meeting by an hour. It's either five-thirty or six. And I'll, I'll send both of you emails.
Um, I have number C, sewer extension policy. Well, Mel, I'll take that one, please.
Yeah, just briefly. We, uh, uh, the letter went out. I think I copied everybody on the, on the letter and the proposed article, if you will. Sent it out to Loretta, uh, and they did get the letter back at their meeting on December one, but really didn't discuss it to any degree that I could tell. And so they invited us to go out and we did go out and meet with them. Um, I still think that there is, you know, some, you know, misunderstanding of how this whole thing works. I, I really do, you know? Suggested to them that one consideration is for them to create a special assessment district for those properties that would or could be connected to the sewer system, which would in essence backfill the town with that fifty percent, uh, of the tax share. I gave, I gave this example of, and I'll use Tom Deniker's place as an example. Let's say Tom Deniker's building is assessed at five hundred thousand dollars and he gets, and he has a tax bill of ten thousand dollars. Let's just say that's the assumption. And under this, under this agreement, sewer gets extended to that property such that it enables him to build a five hundred thousand dollar addition. And it's really because of the sewer. Because if he didn't have sewer, you can't, you couldn't build a half a million dollar addition to that with, uh, car wash capabilities and, and much more employees and all of that. He needs to be on the municipal sewer system. So if it wasn't for that sewer system, the five hundred thousand dollar, uh, addition would not be constructed, right? So that's the whole premise on this, that, that the sewer be extended for the purposes of enabling that five hundred thousand dollar addition. And it's that incremental value and the resulting tax bill, uh, in essence, that would be shared, right? So again, the existing building, five hundred thousand dollars, two percent tax rate, ten thousand dollar bill. You build a five hundred thousand dollar addition, results in additional ten thousand dollar bill. When Tom pays his twenty thousand dollars to the town, the city under this, under this article, if it was approved by both towns, fifty percent of the, of the increase would come back to us. So Fa- Ferrisburg would send us five thousand dollars. Ferrisburg actually ends up with a problem because of the way Act sixty and Act sixty-eight works. Because the state of Vermont, we in effect have a state property tax. So because seventy-five for eight, seventy-five to eighty percent of your tax dollars goes for education, under that scenario, that picture that I just painted, it becomes a loser to the town of Ferrisburg. So how do you make this become not a loser? And the way that it can be made not a loser is for the town of Ferrisburg to create a special assessment district, an overlay tax district on those properties that are benefited from the sewer system. And they would pay a surcharge on their taxes. So in essence, Tom Deniker, instead of paying twenty thousand dollars, would pay twenty-five thousand dollars. The twenty-five would go to Ferrisburg. Ferris would, would send the five thousand to us. And the five thousand dollars gained from the special assessment district would backfill that hole. So there is no harm, if you will. There's no subsidy going on in Ferrisburg to the other properties in Ferrisburg that are not benefiting from this. I've tried to explain this. I think the math is understandable. Uh, but for some reason, uh, the words tax sharing apparently upset people. Uh, if it was called, uh, sewer fee surcharge, if it was called something else. But for some reason, there are, they, there's people that, uh, either don't quite understand the, understand the, uh, the concept that's going on. The one thing that we did make very clear to them, uh, is that we are in no rush. No rush whatsoever. We met for three or four months. The committee met three or four months, brought it back here. You know, maybe we had it in our minds that, you know, this might be something that would appear on the virgins and Ferrisburg ballot. Uh, here it is, the middle of December. Municipalities have to adopt their warning for town meeting by the end of January. To me, this is too soon. Uh, I think that the eleven property owners involved in Ferrisburg need to be involved. I think that the Ferrisburg board should be holding meetings with those eleven property owners. Find out how they feel about it, uh, better understand how a special assessment district would work. Uh, and then come back to us. And it may be something that would be voted on in March of two thousand and eleven. To me, there's no rush. There's no rush on our end, I don't believe. And, and, uh, cause not only do they need to educate their eleven, uh, directly benefited properties and their people, we would need to do the same here. And it takes some time for folks to understand, you know, what this is, uh, you know, what, what's going on here. So, you know, to me, the ball's in their court. Uh, I would suspect that Tom Deniker, you know, I think Tom came to meet with me. I agreed to bring this, this, this with the council. Council created a committee. Committee created this article. City council authorized the release of the article. We've done that. Uh, Tom is aware of it. To me, uh, the next step is really for Tom. If he needs sewer, then he needs to go to the, to the select board of, of Ferrisburg and, uh, you know, let them work out of, uh, to see if something that, that they feel would be of equal benefit to them as it is what it would be to us.
It is not the city's place to go dealing directly with, uh, residents from other towns. And so that's why we've taken the approach that we have. Um, like Mel said, it's probably part of the reason it failed last time was lack of knowledge. People don't like to vote yes when they don't know everything about it. And so we really need to, uh, use this opportunity, uh, providing they agree to, uh, come to our point of reasoning. Um, and, uh, then educate our, our voters that are going to go out voting. I've heard several people standing at the, while I'm standing here at the polls, is they don't know because they don't know what it's all about. And, uh, that, that is, uh, not always a good way to vote. Okay?
Can you post it?
We're gonna take in, uh, go to item number D, uh, and then we're gonna take and jump down to new business just for a few minutes. Cause I, I don't wanna make the rest of the people suffer like it would happen.
Most of them have coats on.
No, and I'm about ready to put mine on. I didn't know I need hand warmers tonight. Next meeting. Um, planning commission appointments. Um, I'm embarrassed because I didn't read the names.
The names are Tyler Goss, who's here.
Tyler?
And the other names are, I believe it's Stacey Raphael.
Yep.
And the other one is Alexandria. Alex, she goes by McGuire. Alexandria McGuire.
And this is for how many year term?
I would, uh, put all, put all these terms at August one, two thousand and ten. I know that, I mean, we've run with seven seats, uh, so this is an eighth seat. So there really isn't a seat for this. But the, the two vacancies were clearly August one, two thousand and ten. So I would appoint the third one.
We did switch that.
You don't just, I think it's fine. It's, 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 the real question is, you know, whether or not we, if we go to eight, it does, it does potentially cau- cause, uh, quorum problems because it increases our quorum, which is currently three. Right now, Neil, with only five people on the board and switches to five. Cause we do have one person on the board that admits that he really is only able to meet, uh, half the meeting. So, uh, I think that, you know, there runs a little bit of risk going to eight. But, but, you know, we have three qualified people, interested people in serving. You know, there's, uh, I don't see any reason to, uh, go through any selection process and lose, lose somebody that's, uh, is interested in serving.
Chris?
And I will second the motion.
Chris made the motion, um, Lowell seconded it. Now we'll open it for discussion. Zicky?
You don't have to. It's, the law is three through nine. That's the number. Doesn't have to be odd. You don't have to.
Any other, any other questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Congratulations. Welcome.
Thanks.
We're going to move down to, uh, under new business for just a minute and go to item number C. Mel, you wanna brief people on this?
Yeah, this is something that some members of the city council may recall, uh, some discussions, okay? And it was, it was during my ten years of not being here. And I, and I didn't know about this, uh, when you all did it. And I don't know all of the details as to what, how you arrived and where you arrived. But anyway, uh, you saw a, uh, memo, if you will, in your packets. I met with Lynn a week or so ago. I don't, Lynn, I don't know that you lived there at the time. A few years ago when this came up. Wayne, of course, Wayne got at and, and his wife, and Boring did. Uh, I really feel that, uh, that this road, it is a quality road. It doesn't have a sidewalk. You know, probably doesn't need a sidewalk. It's a dead-end street and there's not a lot of traffic. It's a well-built road and with the agreement of Wayne of, of, uh, conveying a, a pedestrian easement from Green Meadow Acres over to Buska Court. I believe that there is a pedestrian easement on one of the lots in Buska Court. I believe that's the way that was laid out. But when the three lots on Green Meadow Acres were, were conveyed, the, uh, the owner, Tom, the, uh, the owner, Tom Buska, did not retain that pedestrian right. And so in essence conveyed it away. So in this instance, you know, Wayne has agreed that he would, uh, give up, uh, a pedestrian easement, uh, through that to accommodate that, provided it's not a through traffic, through vehicular traffic. And you really don't want vehicle, vehicular traffic through there. So I think with, with Wayne's agreement, uh, to do that, I think that, that that road, the design and construction of it is fine to take over. I will tell you that from my discussion with public works personnel, that when the decision came for the city not to plow that road any longer, it actually, the result actually was poorer, uh, winter maintenance activity there. Because it really is easier to clear an intersection by going through it and not going around it. So it actually benefits our ability to, to plow, uh, Valmond Road as it turns into Green Meadow Acres by accepting this road as a city street and maintaining it. So the advantages is, is to give us a better ability to plow. It can provide for another pedestrian way, if you will, from connecting, uh, Green Street with, uh, with New Haven Road. The other thing I will tell you, and I think Lynn will vouch for this, people who, who own properties that do not front on a street, I can tell you banks are not getting easier, they're getting tougher, right? I can tell you that, uh, you know, when you have a right of way, uh, as opposed to a city street, there can be some red flags that show up for some lending institution. So it, it actually, if this was not a good road, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be saying this, this is a quality road. We plowed it for years, I mean, we, we didn't wreck it, so it's, it certainly has a good base. So it actually helps the folks out there. And by doing this now, we can add this to our mileage aid certificate, as long as we can get the deed in. And we're not talking about a lot of money, folks, but, you know, another four hundred feet of roads, of class three road gives us some additional mileage aid, as long as we can get the paperwork done by the, the first or the tenth of February, Joan, I can't remember the date, something, something like that. So I, I'd recommend that, that the, that the board, uh, you know, in essence authorize the acceptance of this road and we would engage a city attorney to prepare the necessary deeds and accept this as a straight.
Motion to accept the authorization of this room for?
Second.
Okay, Zicky and Lowell second. Further discussion?
I'm surprised this wasn't a public room before, I mean, everybody else, we have the streets all the way down through there and we have an appropriate people that pays good taxes, I think they should have the same base as everybody else.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? So carried.
Thank you very much.
Ball will be up later tonight. Okay.
You say that E E is gonna, E, there's no action to be taken on E until I get back from, uh, Captain Walker. So that's, that's gonna hang there until I get a response from him.
Are they only spending one night there or will it be spending two nights on a weekend?
That's, that's one of the questions I want clarified, and the other is about the meals. So I, I've, I've continued to email him, he's out of the country, he may have responded with a BlackBerry, so, uh, he, he certainly understands by me email, by my emails that the city council's not gonna take action until he, until he responds.
Okay, item number seven, city manager's report.
Uh, I'm gonna go real rapid fire here. Uh, train station project is, is, I'm gonna say on its way. We have a steering committee involved in hiring the, uh, on the track, track. And, uh, and we, we have not selected the architect and engineering firm at this point. We have another meeting on Monday, and there's seven or eight of us on this committee, so that's the status of that one. I'm not sure if I ever mentioned to you, I know I spoke to you about the fact that Verizon Wireless had expressed interest in their tower, but I don't know that I ever told you that I had signed, I did sign the agreement, I'll send that out to them. And within another month or so, you know, we should see an application in front of the developer new board for a building, because they need to build a building on the water tower block along with putting the antennas. The, uh, option, we are supposed to be sending this two thousand dollar jobs in forty-five days on December.
No.
Okay, well, we'll send the follow-up, they're supposed to spend the, give us the first two thousand as an option payment. It's just, it's not covering any rent, it's just, uh, securing the option two thousand dollars. Give me electronic, less than guts, electronic, you're telling me, you're supposed to pay that in forty-five days. So anyway, that one's, that one's on track. That's a twenty-four thousand dollar a year, um, deal, plus that together with the other three, gets us to pretty close to a hundred thousand dollars. Velco, just wanna let you know that Velco, I got, I got something, I get tons of stuff from Velco. I'll tell you honestly, I don't read very much, but the last thing that I did, uh, it was about, it was about the final landscaping plans. And if you're, I believe that when you all dealt with this, there was some agreement that there would be better landscaping and they were going to recheck. And so I got an email, I wrote back and mentioned that, uh, that I personally was not pleased with how things turned out out there and the maintenance thereof. Neil gets a copy of that and, uh, is however you'd like to deal with it. Neil and the planning commission have, have offered to carry the ball on this, you know. There's others, people sitting around this table that wanna get involved with landscaping plans, you know, raise your hand, we'll tell you when the meetings are. But, uh, I think Neil, uh, is certainly willing to, uh, to take on the lead, if you will, that the planning commission deal with the appropriate planning, plantings and maintenance of, of that facility. So, uh, uh, we intend to, apparently we're still represented by folks arranged for a sharing of an attorney that is involved here. Because I got the letter from Joe McLean.
Yeah, we should have expected.
So anyway, I, I just wanna let you know that we, that we do wanna continue to voice, voice our concern and make sure that the plantings indeed are adequate, are well maintained, that the lawn care is taken care of. That's probably one of the things that kind of upsets me the most, that they don't.
Got a mudslide there.
Yeah, not very good, so.
I'll be honest with you, when they put that building in, I was led to believe and a few other ones, that it was gonna be over for, and it wasn't even recent.
Well, I can tell you that there was an authorization that, that the whole thing shifted thirty or somewhat feet closer to the road. That was something that occurred along the way, you know, a couple of years ago, so.
Really?
Certainly, the, the location is not the ways that it was originally designed. But as you know, Velco does not need to get a zoning permit. And that's one of the, that's one of the problems. Once they get that Act two forty-eight permit, that's where they get it, they don't get it from us. But we do have jurisdiction over the planting, so we do have some say. You know, we do not have any control, but we do have some comment that we can make to the public service board in hopes to get some improved landscaping around that, around that substation.
Could they include a foot path, uh, onto the back porch?
So that's that one, that one. Uh, the other two items I just wanted to touch upon, because they do relate to one another. Last week, uh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we had the field work for the auditors and they were able to complete their work. They say that it went well, so, you know, Joan and I spent a lot of time getting prepared, uh, you know, for them. The method is a lot more complicated than it was ten years ago, but we were able to get through it. A lot more email exchanges today, Joan, while you're away, in your, in your inbox, sorry. Uh, but anyway, it went, it went well. One of the things, uh, uh, one of, one of the things that I wanna report to you, that when you adopted the budget, you know, Joan and I worked on a, like a forecasted fund balance. And, uh, Joan and I finally agreed that the estimate was about seventy-five thousand dollars. That's where we really felt that, uh, it'd be a small fine for that. It was about seventy-five thousand dollars. And of course, we used twenty-five thousand.
I am sorry, you just said the rules, you missed the ground rules today.
We used twenty-five thousand dollars of our fund balance to, to keep the tax rate level. And I had mentioned to you that my estimate of our fund balance was gonna be seventy-five, and it actually turned into eighty-one. So we actually ended the year in even a little better shape than what we had originally projected. The sewer fund, uh, I think it was a year ago or so, that you all finally learned that the sewer fund got out of, uh, deficit and ended up with a twenty-four thousand dollar cash carryover. Uh, that, that fund balance carryover, I should say, has grown from twenty-six thousand to fifty-nine thousand dollars. It's, it's sewer, that sewer fund has grown out. So we clearly have, have come out of the valley and obviously what that will enable us to do next year, when we look at budget, we'll be able to do some additional sewer line work. As you know, we do have a bit of a list there of projects that we need to take care of. So that really is good news, that that fund balance is growing, uh, with a rate that is, that is stable. So that's, fire is in good shape, uh, recycling ended up in the hole, I'm sorry to say, by five hundred eighty-six dollars and ten cents. And it dealt with the fact that, that, uh, Casella bills differently. It was, I think that in the past, the accruals were not done correctly. And then I think somebody assumed that, that the bill that got paid in July was covering June or whatever, and that, that's not the case. So there is a, uh, a slight deficit there, you know, five hundred eighty-six dollars and ten cents in the, uh, in the recycling. So, but anyway, overall it was good. The one thing that did come up, and, uh, they read all of our minutes and wonder about, about things. And the one, and, and we're, we generally are pretty good about coming to you with things that we know that we can come to you with, you know, for creating a fund or for allocating money from a fund that's identified in the minutes. But the one thing that did get uncovered, and sometimes it's like I worked a little bit too long in private sector. Uh, and I haven't been here for a while, and it's about selling assets. No, I haven't sold any real estate, because I know I can't do that, but I, I have sold some assets in the year. And what I mean by that is some junk cruisers. So you have a cruiser that gets taken out of service, I go sell it for fifteen hundred bucks, I sign the title and away it goes. I have two fire trucks that, that, one of them's a nineteen sixty-seven ladder truck, nineteen sixty-nine pumper that's now at the sewer plant. Clearly, the ladder truck should never go into pu- go into fire service again. That's, that's my opinion, I don't know how Mike's feeling, I feel it should be sold to scrap. Scrap metal value's worth about a thousand dollars, that's where it should go. The pumper, you know, the pumper probably shouldn't be scrapped, uh, but there really isn't a lot of value. So the thing that the auditors probably would feel a little comfortable about would be either, you know, that when I wanna sell an asset, like a nineteen sixty-seven ladder truck that's worth a thousand dollars, I come to the board and request permission to sell that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for forgiveness about a police cruiser, because they certainly did do that. I sold one for fifteen hundred dollars, there's no map, there's no reference in the minutes. And I do need to get rid of these trucks, so. I think they would, they would feel better if the council authorized me to dispose of these two, to be able to dispose of these two fire trucks. So that I can get rid of them.
I would like to make a motion to give Mel the authorization and do whatever he wants to do with those fire trucks.
Joe made the motion, Lowell made the second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, oh, you're authorized.
That's all I had there.
Okay, alright, um. Okay, I guess we go to new business, uh, number eight, appointment of first deputy fire chief, Mel.
Right, obviously with the appointment of Jim Brewer becoming the new chief, that leaves opening the first deputy, in accordance with, with state law and of course city charter, the chief and the first deputy require my appointment. And, uh, I did put a, sent a letter out, uh, to everybody in the fire department for really three purposes, you know, one was to officially announce the fire department, the appointment of Jim Brewer. Secondly, to share with everybody in the department what is on Jim Brewer's plate. I'm sure you saw the letter, Mike.
I did get it.
Jim Brewer's got a lot of his plate that he inherited, that, that Ralph Chapman just took care of on his own. So we wanted to clarify that and, um, uh, to let everybody know in the department that, you know, Jim needs some help, uh, help and here, here's, here's what needs to be done, uh, so, you know, people need to raise their hands. Then lastly was to give out everybody an opportunity, the department, to submit their letter of interest for the first deputy position. And, uh, uh, after going through a, a, a long process of hiring the chief and, uh, you know, ch- ch- chief of the police department and a shorter process of hiring, of appointing the, the new chief of the fire department, I had one applicant. And Jim Larrow was the only person that stepped forward, he's currently the second deputy. And he expressed interest in moving up to the first, uh, position. And, uh, it's my decision to appoint him as the first deputy and would ask for a city council confirmation of that appointment.
Zicky? Randy seconded, open it for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. And let's see, skate park oversight committee appointment, Mel.
Yeah, that's, uh, as indicated in my memo, when the skate park approval was granted by the Vrejens Graded School District, there was a requirement that an oversight committee be established comprised of certain members, some at-large members and some members from particular organizations. And it was really an oversight on my part, that the city council did appoint a representative Sandy Ca- Kahart from the Vrejens Union Elementary School, but we did not appoint a designated from the Vrejens Graded School District. And would recommend that Linda Holly be named to that position. And her, obviously that position, if they dissolve on June thirty, she's out of, out of, out of business. But if she's on till June thirtieth of two thousand and eleven, she would remain on that committee for the issue.
You sent motion. Randy made the motion, Chris seconded, open it for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay, um, I'd like to publicly thank, uh, all those citizens that have supported our local food shelf during this holiday season and throughout the, this year. And try to see what you can do to help in the, uh, coming months, uh, as, uh, times are very tough for some, okay? And, uh, holiday stroll, big success this year. Uh, I heard from, I think, three, at least three Vrejens, and they said they had one of the best years, best days ever this year. So, uh, the streets were full at all times and, uh, things went, went well except for I couldn't get the P A systems to work. I'd like to think about when they were supposed to, you know, things, other than, hey, we had a good time, heck, um. I would like to know the intentions of those that are up for election this coming March, um, if they pled on running again. A reminder that the petitions need to be in by January twenty-third, I think it is, uh, two thousand and ten. So, um, please, uh, email me your intentions, I really appreciate that. I wanna thank everybody for their service, uh, to the city. My wife and I would like to wish, uh, the city council, Mel, Lori, Joan, please, please pass on the message to Vissey and, uh, Michelle. All the different departments, uh, and all the different board members and the citizens of the city of Vrejens a very merry Christmas and happy new year. Randy, you wanna do your thing?
Oh, yes. I'd like a motion for adjournment, please.
Randy made the motion, Lowell seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.